Yeah.
Welcome to the May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five regular county council meeting is now called for our order, which is please all rise and face state unit. I.
National agents, be of the back of the United States of America and to the Republic origin stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm still blind from being wrenched. So Shelley, roll call. Becky Curtis, here's Gina Reed Hitler, here's John Breckenridge,
here's John Figer, here's Mark Carr.
Here.
All right, that brings us first to our first public participation. And the first thing we need to do today is that we're going to give out a proclamation to Cameron Veterans Memorial Golf Course. I would like for the members of the golf course to come up forward. My brother loves the golf course, by the way, he comes down from Iowa. Proclamation honoring the Cameron Veterans Memorial Golf Course on its selection of the one of the top twenty-five golf courses in the state of Missouri, whereas the city of Cameron takes immense pride in the institution that represents the value, heritage, and excellence of our community. And whereas the Cameron Veterans Memorial Golf Course, built in nineteen forty-five, has long stood as a pillar of recreation camaraderie and respect for our nation's veterans, offering a premier golf course experience while honoring those who have served in the United States Armed Forces. And whereas the course is not only a place of sport, but also a living for youth to our veterans, embodying a legacy of service, sacrifice, and community spirit. And whereas through the dedication of its staff, supporters, and volunteers, the Cameron Veterans Memorial Golf Course has maintained the highest standard of quality, hospitality, and environmental stewardship. And whereas the course has recently been recognized as one of the top twenty-five golf courses in the state of Missouri, ranking nineteenth, up from twenty-second in twenty-twenty. A prestigious honor from golfpass.com, an NBC affiliate and digital membership and streaming platform for golf enthusiasts. This designation reflects both the excellence of the facility and the pride of the city of Cameron. And whereas this recognition brings statewide attention to Cameron and highlights the hard work, vision, vision, and community support that has made the course a standout designation for golfers and visitors alike. Now, therefore, I Becky Curtis, Mayor of the City of Cameron, Missouri, do hereby proclaim our heartfelt congratulations and appreciation to the Cameron Veterans Memorial Golf Course for this outstanding achievement. Let it be known that the city of Cameron celebrates this milestone and commands all those, commands all those who contribute to the continued success of this beloved community landmark. In witness thereof, I have hereby set my hands and cause to the seal of the city of Cameron to be fixed this nineteenth day of May, twenty twenty-five. Congratulations. That brings us to our public participation. We have John Snyder, who is on the agenda at sixty-five minutes, on the airport construction traffic on the O'Connell Road.
Yes, John Schindler, just for the record, so you know. They started running these trucks out by us on our road. And it just liked to, it liked to kill us. Hell, you couldn't breathe just out there in the yard working everything. We weren't warned that they was gonna start it or anything. They just all started. So I went over and I talked to Eric about it. And of course, Eric, now he's got a good relationship. We've done work out there and everything. And I asked him if they couldn't reroute those. It's your guys' project, not ours. So I don't know why they can't come in the highway, go down a highway and come in from this end and go in so we can breathe out there. We put down dust control and it's not gonna last. They said it wouldn't last. And I think what they say that Eric told me the the project was supposed to last six months, that we're gonna eat this dust from that, from all those trucks, never getting going through there. After I said something to him about it, they did slow down a little bit. So it wouldn't throw as much dust. But we spent good money. Put that on there. We'd like for maybe the city to compensate us a little later on, but put more down on that so we can solve that problem. Or take them trucks around the other way. We didn't ask for that. It's great that we've got an airport. I love it, you know? I've been out there with a friend of mine. We flew around everything. That's beautiful airport. But I still think that we should have been warned on that. And I'd like to see the city kind of compensate us for that dust control and kind of help us out. I asked him if they could take even a water truck down through there. Well, it never, the water truck never showed up. We put our dust control down, but it's not gonna last. It costs good money to do that. That's my idea. I'd kind of like to see the city help us out by compensating that for their project out there. And I've got my neighbors here. They, they're the same way. They live there and they, they got the same problem. So I don't know. I just, whatever you guys think, but I think that if you could help us out, it'd be great some way.
I, I spoke with I decker. They, they actually, I was the county, the city did put the dust control down. They spoke with them. It's usually gonna be like three or four weeks before they get back. But they are gonna, it's up to the whole.
Oh, that'd be wonderful. Cause now since it's raining, they've brought all that, it's just mud now. And when they pack it, pack it thick, then it's gonna make, if they keep going up down, it's just gonna be holding. And we usually put a layer of rock down before we put that stuff down. And then they do it next stage for all.
Yeah, they've already made the phone call to the dust control company and they were, they were like to get there on.
Okay, that's what I'm here for. I'm just wanting to find out what they're gonna do to try to help us out a little bit on that. We, we got money invested in it too. So, you know.
I think they've got all the concrete out now, right?
They did.
Yeah, so that's the worst of the. Yeah.
Yeah. That's the shortest route of course.
Right. And then that'll, the concrete trucks won't be that fast.
Right.
They, they won't be speeding along. So hopefully around the corner. Yeah.
I got one thing on the same subject. I wanted to make. I thought she did. Maybe it's written. One more. M-O-N-C-E-N-O-R-R.
When you, when you leave, would you mind signing that for?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Didn't appreciate that.
Oh, no problem. I talk to Jeff now. And every year I talk to Jeff. And what we do to, right before the dust creep in and put down, Jeff will lay that road and then he puts rock on. And we try to do it as soon as possible. The reason being, it locks that rock in and helps you keep it on top. And you know, a three axle trailer can haul approximately sixty thousand plus fifty. Uh, two axles, three seven thousand plus fifty. So that rock's pushing down and it brings the dust down. The idea is, you know ahead of time, you can contact Jeff and I'll be glad to do that.
I have Jeff's phone number.
Okay.
I deckers, they're, they're keeping it a touch, although I'll know whenever it's coming and I'll have, I'll get, I'll get hold of Jeff.
Yeah, it, it's worked out really good and years prior. So thank you for your time.
While you're at it, just tell them what we said. Thank you for slowing down. Cause they weren't at first. I mean, they were flying by. They're like, so Suka does that too. When they go by, they just fly by. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on public participation? All right, we'll move on to the conference agenda. Are there any requests to move the items from the conference agenda to the regular agenda for discussion? No, the court will now read the items on the conference agenda. Thanks, Shelley.
Item A, motion to approve the minutes of the May first, twenty twenty-five special meeting hearing. Item B, motion to approve the minutes for the May fifth, twenty twenty-five regular session. Item C, motion to approve the minutes for the May seventh, twenty twenty-five special meeting. Item D, motion to approve the annual liquor license renewal for SBJ Fuel, Cameron's Eppen Memorial Golf Course, Rudy's Discount Smoke Shop, Love Travel Stop, and Cameron Liquor LLC.
I will entertain a motion to pass the conference agenda.
Move second.
All those in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Passes, by in favor, zero opposed. That takes us on to our appointments. We have nothing. Is that where you change? All right. Well, I guess at this time, what used to be the city managers report, we're gonna have staff who do those department reports during, during the sitting in the night, in the filling. Okay, so let's move on to unfinished business. That takes us to our second and final reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash four.
Yeah, I need to read these myself. Well, that door and.
Okay. All right, Shelley.
Bill twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, an ordinance authorized by the city of Cameron, Missouri, to enter into a contract with Cameron Municipal Base.
I will entertain a motion to pass, uh, Bill twenty twenty-four dash fourteen on a second and final reading by roll call. Discussion.
Great thing.
Shelley.
Gina Reed Hitler. John Breckenridge.
Yep.
John Figer.
Yep.
Mark Carr.
Yep.
Becky Curtis.
Yeah. That takes us to our second and final reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash eighteen. Shelley.
Bill twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, an ordinance of the city of Cameron, Missouri, approving a memorandum of understanding, MLB, between the city of Cameron Police Department, Cameron Art and Peaceful Yolfer, Hall County Sheriff's Office, and Platte County Sheriff's Office regarding law enforcement through.
I will entertain a motion to pass Bill twenty twenty-five dash fifteen on a second and final reading by roll call.
Move second.
Discussion. Are there any other updates or discussions on this? I think Daddy's done a good job getting that newsletter for the, for the schools and the parents. And hopefully, you know, the children are all involved.
Yeah, I've been invited to these, uh, still warming bar line to talk with them all.
Good, good. Yeah, we all want to look at each other. All right, Shelley.
John Breckenridge.
Yeah.
John Figer.
Yep.
Mark Carr.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Gina Reed Hitler.
Yes. Matt Moses for our public hearing, the Cameron Crossing Community Improvement District.
Gina Reed Hitler.
Okay. I will enter a motion to enter the public hearing by roll call by a motion and a second.
Move second.
John Figer.
Yes.
Mark Carr.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Gina Reed Hitler.
Yes.
John Breckenridge.
Mayor members, this public screening is continuing from the May fifth, thirty pound meeting um, concerning the Cameron, the proposed Cameron Crossing Community Improvement District. Under the CID Act, the CID was formed upon submission of a petition to the state of Missouri governed by a board of directors. With one of those directors, you know, Anthony Ficker, actually was generally the non-interested party.
I'll show you them.
The eight director.
That lives, that lives in the middle of the city. That is one of the requirements of the disinterested director.
Um, the proposed CID intends to fund construction public improvements in the area specifically apartment facilities, site grading, and utility extensions. CID, the total amount on the division, one hundred seventy million dollars in terms of costs. There are also additional costs that are included in the collaborative grant that we can discuss later. The city gave, write a notice of the magnitude, public hearing, the, uh, published notice in the observer, mail notice to the property owners, and then it is going to be presented to the CID. At this hearing, the game people in favor or against, and the city council regarding that, we're all representatives of property owners. Good night.
If there's anybody.
I have a question. Okay, so there's a gray, a gray device to west of that. And it says in it that they will have a wall.
Uh, I think that would be something we can discuss from moving all that. The act forward.
Okay.
Okay. I have a question. Okay, so there's a gray, a gray device to west of that. And it says in it that they will have a wall.
Uh, I think that would be something we can discuss from moving all that. The act forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Well. We will go ahead and I will entertain a motion to exit the public hearing regarding the CID by roll call.
Move. Second.
Mark Carr.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yeah.
Gina Reed Hitler.
Yes.
John Breckenridge.
Yes.
John Figer.
Yes.
That takes us to a full reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash seventeen.
Bill twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, an ordinance approving an agreement between the city of Cameron, Missouri, and the Missouri Department of Natural Resources regarding demolition and remediation oversight letter of agreement at one twelve East Third Street.
I will entertain a, a motion to pass Bill twenty twenty-five dash seventeen.
Move. Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Uh, this is an agreement with DNR basically to provide oversight and testing from DNR. And so this is just three thousand dollars that we will pay to them so they can do the testing. Make sure on one twelve East Third that it gets taken down in a great manner. So we're working through the COVID and this as well. And we're doing it in two readings at this evening or during this evening because we want to get this thing knocked down as quick as possible. And we didn't want to wait a whole second to forget. We've got the bid in. DNR is not going to look at bid specs until we get this. So that's why we have to go fully in it.
And it's all covered by grant money.
This part won't be at this point.
No, but the initial three thousand dollars.
But the demolition will.
Hmm, not all of it. We'll have to throw in money as well, but there will be grant money involved.
This is mostly for the remediation.
Yeah.
Well, the remediation is the demolition.
Well, no, but the testing is that part.
Yeah. Well, the testing's been done. This is the testing during the demo.
Is this, are you gonna use a water curtain?
That's what part of the bid spec.
Yeah.
So yeah, it's, it has been proposed that we will do a wet demo.
Yeah.
For, for the building. That way, because of few dangers, we go in and check the SFS and let it in plain. So that let us be eligible for the brown, some brownfield money that Mo can have. So the answer is yes, there will be grant money. Is it enough to cover the whole thing? No. So and until we know the prices, then I can, once we know the prices and we vet it out, then I can pay it what it was.
We don't have a hard to do that.
Yeah. No, it, I can make me clear from thirty-five thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand. Then that's coming from DNR. I'm like, oh, okay. Got to fix something in the middle. So.
Yeah.
That is what that's about.
Motion.
All right. All those in favor of passing Bill twenty twenty-five dash seventeen? Say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. All right, it says, that's fantastic. We'll go ahead and, um, entertain a motion to suspend the rules and pass Bill twenty twenty-five dash seventeen on a second and final reading by the roll call.
Move second.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Gina Reed Hitler.
Yes.
John Breckenridge.
John Figer.
Yes.
Mark Carr.
Yeah.
All right. The second part of this is Bill twenty twenty-five dash eighteen.
Shelley. Bill twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, an ordinance approving an agreement between the city of Cameron, Missouri, and the Missouri Department of Natural Resources regarding the voluntary cleanup letter of agreement at one twelve East Third Street and the demolition.
I will entertain a motion to pass Bill twenty twenty-five dash eighteen on a first reading.
Move second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So this is a continuation, as the mayor said, of this DNR project in which we put down a deposit. And it's basically our earnest money to say that we will clean up the property. And if we don't clean up the property correctly, then we owe DNR fifty thousand. So the idea is that we'll get that fifty thousand back after the DNR inspectors prove that we did.
And they're wanting it cleaned up and left grade with like aggregate.
Seated bulk.
Oh, uh, uh, something to have to maintain. Is that a good idea?
Not our property. It's still Mr. Williams afterward. So I didn't want to put any more money down on that property.
No, I wouldn't either.
Um, and so, because he had the opportunity to sell it and then we will put a lien against it.
There you go.
And the lien's gonna be against it. I didn't want to put any more city money into it than we have to.
Good idea.
So not whoever else does it. I will tell you this, it's in the spec. We're gonna knock it out, clean it out, fill it in, full of clear, or clean fill.
Yeah.
Uh, basic floor will be gone. I'm, I'm an adamant believer in that. Whenever we knock one down, I want it cleaned. Um, we don't want surprises for anybody else that buys that lot and future that goes down in time.
Not code anyway.
Right. So that's, that's what this is about. Once we get, uh, once we get through this tomorrow, we'll send the check down to DNR so we can start the process and get them to approve and plan the spec. With, then we'll advertise it. Two weeks later, we'll overbid. So that's the plan.
Yeah.
What do you expect it to be done?
I put it in there for thirty days. I asked DNR what their thoughts were. And they said thirty days is definitely covered. They could probably do it. However, our demolition contractors are like, ooh, um, getting them in here to start the process.
Who's the contractor?
You don't know? We haven't been it.
Oh, you haven't been it?
No. But it's in that, it's in the bid specs that we need it down and, you know, have fast and fast. But begin everybody put that down in their spec. That they're, they're the top of the list.
Yeah.
They want to proof the bid spec until we do that.
Right.
Right.
Well, I'm glad it's been done. Thank you very much. Thank you on that.
My pleasure. I just wish it didn't take so long to get through all the bureaucracy, but it does.
Our mayor's fault.
No, it's.
I second that.
Okay. I will, um, all those, uh, all those in favor passing Bill twenty twenty-five dash eighteen? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes, by in favor, zero opposed. I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and pass Bill twenty twenty-five dash eighteen on a second and final reading by roll call.
Move second.
Discussion.
Shelley. Gina Reed Hitler.
Yes.
John Breckenridge.
Yes.
John Figer.
Yes.
Mark Carr.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes. All right. All right, now we're at the. All right, our first reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash nineteen.
Bill twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, an ordinance approving the petition for the establishment of a Cameron Crossing Community Improvement District and directing certain city officials to take pertinent additional agreements considering their whip.
I will entertain a motion to pass Bill twenty twenty-five dash nineteen on a first reading.
Move.
What was that coming up?
Discussion.
Mayor members of the council, this is the final step in the formation of the proposed Cameron Crossing CID. Uh, we, obviously you're all passing other ordinance that proven that, as stated earlier, it would be going separate political subdivision. Right now, there's an intent that the CID would ask the four or five brothers in the CID district, uh, the owners that are on the people living within the CID district, to approve any sales tax on retail sales made solely within the district fund, one point seven million dollars of improvement that was discussed in the petition. In addition to approving the petition, the ordinance also approves a cooperative agreement from the city, uh, district and also the property owners regarding the obligation of the party parties to the CID fund as currently laid out of the cooperative agreement passed as part of the packet. The city would essentially access the bank, it would receive revenues from a very prominent of revenue and would distribute those upon receiving reimbursement surplus from the property owner or developer that invoices and things for causing her that were part of the improvement of the discussion of the petition. Um, the way that the cooperative agreement is currently laid out is that the city would not defer revenues from that account until there is, I believe, was discussed by the cemetery board and the developers, exactly what needed to be constructed. And then might have some more information on that.
I make sure it's, um, a fan big on behalf of the Fisher and Albertson Motor Group, um, developers inside the Fisher and CID. Um, the question related to the cemetery?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's an agreement between, from Black and, agreement between cemetery board and our group that we will be constructing a privacy screen in. So, but I'm a big concern to the city and big concern to the cemetery. So our team, I just want to make sure that they, they're involved with that and, um, to the board and.
Yeah, I read that in there. So I was like, oh, I'm fascinated about that. Cause I appreciate that.
Now, what does that consist of? That's not just a chain link, it's a classic script.
That's right.
Well, that's, oh, that's you.
So I've actually met with the cemetery board a little over a year ago. They brought, they had a major concern, um, with the construction of Packer Lane. You know, the trucks coming in and out. Um, so what we agreed to, there were some different options that were thrown out. Um, but what we agreed to is to have some sort of private system. Um, we will not do the chain link, chain link. Um, probably do something online. While we're just approved, we just have to go through a board of assessment.
All right.
Um, looking more so like a six foot, or even taller vinyl thing. Um, that's got solid piney. There can be cosmetically appealing, um, plus, you know, affordable as well and maintainable.
And once it's been placed, then the cemetery board has to maintain that?
Yeah, it would, it would become, it would become their third, third thing on their property line.
And then who will get the final say on it? On what is approved?
The board of adjustment will get the final say. So we actually don't have a sort of, any of that now.
No, I'm sorry. I just didn't want that. Sometimes that's used and it gets fucking shoddy.
Yeah. It'll be at the discretion of Board of Adjustments, go get final approval.
Now, will the, um, the road that Packer Lane, that road, is that gonna be approved? Is that gonna be an asphalt?
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a complete full, um, improvement. Um, be within its respect. It's gonna have full depth paving, curb and gutter. Um, actually gonna change the, the grading layout up to the cemetery, um, all storm.
Good.
You know, we'll have future use, um, you know, for public sidewalk. You know, right now, there's nowhere for sidewalk to go, but there's things that are in, in plan and, and motor groups, they've worked hard for the last couple of years to put this in. And up to this point, just to make sure that we meet all the things that are required.
Will that end up at, uh, up at Manion's property on the south?
Yeah, yeah. So right now, we have it going just about midway in the remaining property.
Oh, is that, so it'll go past that drive line?
Yes, it is.
Well, that'd be really nice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It'll be a major improvement out there.
Yeah, well, it'll look good. And I was worried about the docks, if it wasn't improved roads in the cemetery.
Yeah, of course, um, that, we, and if that last year, um, went through all that, went through the approval.
Yeah.
And because of that, we wanted to make sure we offered a good product out there that was gonna be feasible for everybody.
Yeah.
So these guys are really, we're gonna be investing a lot of money into the community and into that area. I think it's gonna be good. It's gonna be a good journey. Like we've seen what left and what's new.
Yeah.
And so, uh, our strongly encouraged it, advocated for it. So they've been working hard. So we should see, um, actually, the bid plan, uh, last few days, uh, the city's that. So we're going through the review process and we're working on comments. So I would say that, you know, we'll be, we need a lot of activity here in the next few weeks.
Restaurant. Some church. Well, there, no, I mean, final product will be a restaurant there.
Yeah, they're looking at it. There's gonna be a couple of different options.
Yeah.
Go through the works. Um, we won't make any public announcements on that right now, but, um.
Just try to squeeze it out a bit a little bit. I'm kind of a food guy.
They'll be happy with, with, um, they're looking at the office.
Good.
There'll be, there'll be a couple different ones.
That'd be nice.
And then it's also gonna have, there'll be a forefront, uh, truck service center.
Yeah.
With a, a truck wash. That's one thing that we gotta see that, this, well, the truck is a big community, but.
Yeah.
Um, the truckers really need those options.
And then I guess the, probably the final part of the agreement that should be noted is that, right now, the agreement authorizes reimbursement up to just a shade over three million dollars. It is the intent of the parties, though, that one point three million dollars of those expenses, including construction in Packer Lane, would be reimbursed by the proposed T V D in that area, because those improvements were already actually listed as transportation projects. And that T V D then requires by Mo, not in addition to other improvements. And then once the T V D is formed and reimburses those, then those would no longer be subject to reimbursement by the C I D. But it was a way to make sure that, you know, animals come down and, and the public will form T V Ds and develop for, and still see reimbursement for them. Signatures them out, that holiday period sort of being constructed because, and.
No, go ahead. I think the moment that we could shore up the T V D type thing, we could, we could, I think, make sure that.
And then just as a note, um, the current trade value of the property is fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, after the development is constructed, that the C I D is in public, the public improvement form, the estimated trade value is over five million dollars. There is a significant improvement. This is only based on there is some additional property included within the C I D boundaries that is not, uh, contemplated yet with its improvements or formalized, which one could go there. There is the intent of the additional development.
True. Is that the area approached or did that interstate?
No.
Behind it?
Yeah, they, they just favor this, this, making sure, you know, with the, the, they done the, all that.
Right.
All of that, there's been a lot of, uh, people make sure they can probably do that and try and invite for it to always kind of hold it.
Yeah, I think you're right. And there was, Mr. Van Hooch, you have full analysis of the rate of return. And without the C I D, it was questionable at best whether or not there was a rate of return that would allow for any developments which are out there. And then the C I D gives the, the reasonable rate of return.
Yeah, especially in the past across sixty-nine months, a lot of uncertainty during the market. So, and then I think our, you know, the conditions side, I, 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 um, yeah, I would say, committed to find what's make sure it happens, but it's always good.
Good.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you for that. All right, no more questions. We'll go ahead and pick up first reading. All those in favor of passing Bill twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes five in favor, zero opposed. All right, that takes the resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, showing. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, a resolution approving an agreement between City of Cameron, Missouri, and C and G Gravesmith for the purpose of cemetery impairment at the five city cemetery. I will entertain a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five.
No move.
Second.
Um, we, we did out the, uh, cemetery permit. We do that every two years. We, we did that out and got the results in March. C and G Gravesmith has, has survival services since the inception of, of that contract in the house. That's near. It's been a while.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah. Since two thousand. Um, so every, every two years, we do, we did that out. C and G did put in a bid this year. They were the only bid that put in. Uh, the rates have gone up. Uh, they met with the heart, sorry, the heart board. They met with the cemetery board. And the cemetery board, um, did ask some questions. Um, Kurt Thompson was there from C and G Gravesmith, and he did provide, um, some rates of area impairment. And the rates that are being proposed for Cameron are actually a little bit less than what they charge currently at the O. So it is a, a competitive. Um, on their agreement, when they listed out the cost, they put what, plus twenty-five out to the side of each one. That's actually not theirs. We need, the city gets a twenty-five dollar administrative fee for every impairment. And he, they collect it for us, so they put it on there, but it's actually a separate line on the comprehensive schedule. So it's just the amount listed on, on the coverage.
I like the idea that on their bid, opening a grave for children's infants is way cheaper than adult, because, you know what families are going through at that time. And their biggest cost is getting the excavator out there and getting it set up. And the time difference is just minutes. So I, that, that seems like a nice gesture right there.
All right, if there aren't any other comments in discussion, let us go ahead. All those in favor of passing Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five.
Say aye.
Say aye.
Oh, aye. I'll just finish it, boy.
Gonna say aye, okay, sorry.
Where we're at.
Okay. Passes five in favor, zero opposed. Next is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, Shelley.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cameron, Missouri, updating the comprehensive schedules for regulating and assessing fees in terms of.
I'll entertain a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six.
No move.
Second.
Discussion.
It seems like we just did this at the last meeting.
Yeah.
We just, we don't update it, and then we updated two meetings in a row. So along with changing those fees, those fees are listed on the comprehensive schedule. So the only change of all the new schedules are there.
Right. All right, any more questions? All right, all those in favor of passing Resolution twenty twenty-five dash six, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes five in favor, zero opposed. All right, that takes us to Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven.
Shelley, you did get that in twenty-six.
Yeah. What did I say?
You said twenty-seven was.
Shelley, on twenty-seven, Revolution, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, a resolution updating the policies and procedures for board and commission appointments. I will entertain a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven.
No move.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, yes, this resolution amends city's current process for appointments to make sure that it could not be appropriated to, you think, when government give, up there, statutory duties of the mayor and the council to approve the, their appointment, approve with consent. Appointments, um, it just clarifies the final step, that the board submit, the board commission submits, it proposes slate, along with all other applications that were received at that time. And then the city council can decide whether or not to approve this slate. Through written part, approve different people, or send it back to the.
Yeah, I like this, sending it back. I don't think we have that before.
Well, no, as currently written.
Oh, yeah.
Home.
Oh. It looked like we had.
Didn't approve the slate submitted and had to go back. And there was no direction for board commission. So technically, if there was ever a situation, somebody could, the board could continuously submit the same, is approved slate.
Right.
Usually, and that would then make it that people would consider it indefinite.
But does this allow you to approve part of the slate?
Yes.
Whether you can just check off the one you want.
Yes, definitely. And then send the rest back and say, select somebody else to that one.
And there's no assumption that someone's been on the board of whatever for a certain amount of time, they'll automatically approve. You're going to approve them every single time that thing is up.
No, there's no assumption that that's it.
They have to be applying, yeah.
You have a question? I think that was great, Shelley. All right, all those in favor of passing Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes five in favor, zero opposed. Next is the Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight, Shelley.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight, a resolution for the City of Cameron, Missouri, to approve an agreement with that promise for scoreboard of the Cameron Community Park in Old Southern.
I will entertain, um, um, a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
No move. Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember. It was, uh, kind of an ongoing deal or something, uh, ballfields out there that, uh, wrong scoreboard. It didn't have any fall strikes, right?
Yeah.
Just trying to bring some things, like all the time. Part of what I like what I offer them, part of sign and stuff, and a good part about it is, a lot of it will be just taking old ones down. We won't have to do anything with shoulders or anything like that.
And where was that arrow made? Just the weather or where?
I know.
How was that arrow made? Who made it? Is the way?
Well, we know, I know. I, I know, I know.
Well, I'd like to know.
I'll tell you.
Yeah, I'd love to. Kind of like to know, right?
It happened, it was a misunderstanding. I, I'm gonna call it a misunderstanding of the, the superintendent of our park board ended up ordering those, not realizing they were really volleyball? No, soccer.
Soccer.
Yeah, and when they first put them up, we were like, and we were kind of hoping they'd be taken care of by now, but it's definitely just the way the park board has gone to different superintendents. Trying to get the, the one we have, um, that's why it's different.
Okay.
So they are appropriate for soccer. And that's kind of maybe my future plans, our soccer is, um, what, we have the soccer's lived out there.
Yeah, awesome.
We got a, we got a lot of run power and all that too, but, you know, we'll, we'll have them. So they could be healed, everything.
They have, it's a timer, they have a timer.
Yeah.
The other thing too, um, and I think, I think I asked you this already, but maybe someone in here will know. So I have been told that, um, we had our quarter scoreboard passed. Four out there, baseball scoreboard for that, and that they were put somewhere.
No, I never been talking about that.
Well, it was supposed to. I went through, I couldn't find it in any of the minutes or anything on the park board side, but I was, I mean, the minutes were so few and far between that it was difficult to try to see that. But this, I mean, this goes back to Steve Garg. So I mean, it had nothing to do with you, and I, I'm not saying he did anything wrong. I, we may have even got him. But I don't know where they're at, maybe from the ditch.
No, I don't know. I know they talked about him, so I don't.
I think people tell me that it was voted on. And, and.
It was voted on, but that's the name of the team.
No, 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 the new one because of this.
Oh, yeah, I know, but I don't, I don't know anything about it. They were kind, they were moving through so many different people. It was kind of, I don't think anyone person in charge.
Well, I was six, he was seven.
Well, he was back there in the truth.
Zach, Zach was like number four.
Two, three.
Yeah, because there's been seven of us since they got built.
Yeah.
Right. Well, that, but, but I'm still trying to figure out, you know, if we did buy them, and if they're sitting somewhere.
They would have had to been approved by the council.
I don't think they actually got bought.
They were that.
I didn't think so.
And, and.
They're gonna be that high, so they'd have to be approved that way.
Well, the, the person who told me this, that it was there when we did this. So, yeah, I mean, I wasn't. But if you all don't remember either, then.
Well, it's never been voted on here. I know we never voted on it.
I know whenever I took over in August, this was the same conversation with the same people involved. If, if they would have had them, we would have been having them on stage.
I never saw a person order pretty thing except for the one that we.
And that's what I was gonna ask was, uh, I was hoping coming, it would be good to ask.
Right back there.
It's right there, hell.
Coming. I didn't see, I'm sorry. I do not.
I do not recall. I'm, I'm making a perjury to you, but I don't.
You don't remember it either.
Okay.
Good enough. I, if no one here remembers, that's, that's fine. I just didn't want to be buying other, uh, scoreboard. The only other question I had is, so this, how many scoreboard is this for? Three? Three. Okay. And so all they've got to do is just hang them on the existing pillars.
Yeah, they'll, they'll remove the old ones, and then it'll be us for a while. We have to chop out there and we'll, we're gonna carve them up and probably get, uh, uh, try to actually try to take care of them. Because I was like, I told my, I was like, it's maybe sometime in the future, use them for the soccer club out there, so.
Do we have three of the soccer, or one scoreboard?
Mm-hmm.
How many fields do you have out there?
Three out there, another three out there, state parks, two, yeah. We could utilize it.
Yeah, that'd be really nice.
Well, they're nice scoreboard.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, just give me a big favor and make sure when they get put in, that we check it this time, because I don't think anybody went outside by.
Actually, we got all the stripes now.
That would help. That, that would help. Maybe then we could add a cimeter.
That way, they should bring things and, uh.
Everybody makes.
Something else with that. I am gonna check with, uh, the sponsors that are out there on the scoreboard and stuff. I was told that they had like a, they bought, bought in sponsorship of like five year deals. They got a couple of years. So I will probably spend a little bit more money and, uh, get them like the graphics design, wherever I put up the news. Make them like, looking nice, you know, you know. Let me do the same for ownership.
I think there was, when I, I just happened to find that when I was looking for the minute, I want to say there was also like a lifetime on some of, like one.
Sponsorship?
Yeah, the sponsorship had like a one or five. Yeah, the sponsor chain had like a one or five or, there's a lifetime on some of it out there, because I just don't know if it's that. But I just remember it being either on the ballfield itself.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to check with the sponsors and see what they say about it. I've seen like what Clay was telling me, said he knew it was all sponsored out there, but it was five years. So he still, they still got a couple of pieces. We'll put a sponsor deal in five years.
Fair enough.
No other questions? All those in favor of passing resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty eight, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes five in favor, zero opposed. That takes us to our, we're going to take a move, I think. Oh, we haven't got a resolution. Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty nine. Shelley. Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty nine. A resolution of the city of Cameron, Missouri accepting the bid and authorizing an agreement with thirty key general contractors for base one of the city hall improvement project. I will entertain a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty nine.
So move. Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, Council, um, this is a contract with thirty key general contractors for the demolition and renovation for city hall. Um, it had come in at, it came in around fifty-six thousand, went to six thousand, over the engineer estimated pretty close. That was the only bid that.
I was going to say, and the only bid.
That's the only bid. Pretty much know everything else that's going on with that. So if you've got any questions for me.
Did we rebid? I mean, do you think we're going to, you would have a talk with, getting anybody else rebid?
We had, we had, we had three, three companies down in the west, just the wall through.
Okay.
One backed out, and the other one didn't. I, I was really thrilled with.
Probably too late in the season, even if I did that.
They were wanting to get this going, so.
Yeah. Okay. No, I just wanted to check with you and see if you thought you need more bid. Okay.
So most of it, could you add an engineer? Assess that.
And when can they start?
Unbelievable. Thirty days, I believe, after, I'm not looking that long. Ten days, I believe, after contact is signed. Ten fifteen, I'd have to look.
Do you have another question? Just curious. So when the engineer gives us the estimate, so are these contractors looking at this? I just don't know how it works. Are they looking at it going, oh, this says three hundred fifty thousand?
Well, that estimate is not revealed until after the bid.
Until after? Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Same way with the street projects and stuff like that.
Okay.
Yeah, like, Shelley, that's not revealed till after this, after the later one.
Okay.
I did have this company email and ask me what the, before the bid, and I said, uh-uh.
Well, you never know with cities, the way that they do things, sometimes it's like, they're just going to say, what did it for me?
Yeah.
Crazy.
All right. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor of passing resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty nine, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. That takes us to our next public participation. My second. If anybody wants to speak to us, then come forward, write your name, and you have five minutes. All right. I guess that takes us on to miscellaneous comments from the south.
Lovely. I've, we had our large trash drop off last Saturday, and I felt it was a pretty good success. We had twenty-nine point two-five tons of trash brought in. Pretty good turnout. Um, crew, they are patching, like, we were doing great animals today before the storm got here. Uh, they've been mowing the cemeteries. Fortunately, our guy at Mo's Cemetery passed away suddenly, um, so three crews are out keeping the cemeteries mowed up.
That's the memorial they come in.
Right, right. That's one of the crews they always pitch in, coming to the memorial, mountain of all. Get them based down to the runway, uh, runway up airport, and, and that's all. My, uh, lucky crew's been working on some trees up cemetery, uh, putting up, this is the one I'm with. Um, we lost the new whole change outs and heater change outs. The water, we've been still getting tours, and, but we are, we've just been changing out. And, uh, work on a lot.
What?
Okay. Well, I've been working with Moda slash P A on one group of items for economic development, and Frederick and I and Shelley have been working on another group for a P I D and another C I D. And so we've been working with them on some economic development. We've also been working with Mike and Carmen on the Bob Griffin C I D, uh, where we can, we're getting to the end of that, where we're actually going to get that moving and actually fill many days. Um, dealing with P A and Moda with the C I D and a chapter one hundred, so we'll work with them on that. Uh, trail grant closed out. We got to get it closed out by the end of June third, if we have some extra for that last duty that we put in. And, uh, dealing with the D N R agreements for one till Easter, moving those forward. Been dealing with some great Northwest old bellwater items. So we've been doing that as well. Uh, D E D, I've been meeting with D E D, Location One and Missouri Partnership. That's all on the business part sale. And so I've got some good hits with them on them trying to help me get that out there to a larger audience. And to get that to the developers that we need. Then, of course, we've had lots of P and Z things to get through, and we're continuing on with those, as well as the board of adjustments we've had meetings for that last week, on a couple of things we had to put to ourselves. Yeah. Pretty busy.
All right.
I've been working at school, um, get it, finally filled it lately. Uh, been doing water testing on it, trying to get the water balance figured out on here. And so it's coming along nicely. We had our delivery chemicals finally showed up before you, so school's coming along nicely. Uh, Amy and our pool manager said needs to try and get the kids and road testing and stuff all finished up with that and their I I stuff. So, uh, we are on track to open up depending on the weather. Weather's kind of crazy. It's got to be at least seven degrees out. Uh, depending on that, we should, we should be open on four. Pretty excited about that. Um, baseball season started last week. Uh, all in all, I think it's a pretty good start of the first week, but we did have a couple of requests for jalapenos and mayo. I can't, can't remember everything. But it's going pretty good. And then the pro track test guys showed up, and they started working on the test board and put the ball court down there by the wreck park and stuff. So, um, they, very nice guys. They thought maybe three, three weeks they'd have that project finished up down there. So, and then the, uh, just waiting on the Ford Place River guys to finish up the new piece of playground with the park. So I had mainly concrete come in, and they got the crew forward week or two, and they're trying to get on the schedule of those jobs. Trying to finish up a couple of projects and get the pool up and running, and take care of the, so, it's been very busy, but, uh, we're getting it done, so.
Do you have any openings? Do you need any help with the concession thing?
No, we're just, like I said, a lot of it, what we're waiting on is the drug testing and the kids, maybe text a fact or email a fact, or even make a phone call. So we're, we're starting to ask it soon. It's difficult. It's okay.
Well, they're done with school on Thursday, so they'll have no.
Yeah, they'll always have.
They'll have no excuse. But no, we have, we have plenty of applications for the concession thing and stuff. Uh, I've had to work a couple of nights, and my staff has had to work a couple of nights. So it's no big deal. We're, we're making it work right now. We knew we were kind of in this week or two kind of pattern right now, so it just got out of school, like you said, and got all this stuff. But, I mean, and, and the hospital's been very busy, and if they went to the school and did all of their, uh, it's not inspection, not at all.
Physical?
Physical inspection.
Yeah, inspection.
I've been to Sunju long, I guess. Too much chlorine.
Too much chlorine, I guess. But they got, they had to go to school and get those all completed, so we were at a couple of dates for the kids to go up there to drag testing, and then they're going to have a couple more. I think this week they should, all of our kids that thirty-five, forty applications, they should all be. All right.
Thank you for, for all that you had to do. This has been a real learning curve.
It's definitely been a learning curve, challenging.
It's been a lot of work.
I would have.
So you said, hopefully, we start on the twenty-fourth. We have a Sunday date in mind yet.
I'm going to try to, it all been on personnel though.
Okay, okay. I figured it was, but I just.
I've had a lot of.
They had a lot of people laugh.
I've had a lot of phone calls myself.
You're like, when, when you roll pool closed? I'm like, I don't know. I'm going to try to head open.
Nobody else to.
I mean, you know, that, in that first week of August, or that first two weeks, or the bid week in there, when Andy's telling me, and that's when a lot of kids go on vacation with their parents and stuff. You know, I think last year Midwest school shut it down around the fifteenth, you know, on the fifteenth. So the August first, first, August fifteenth was kind of, perhaps you might be open a few days. Uh, we may shut it down. I don't know. We get closer that time.
Okay, fair enough.
I also know, and I'm sure you do too, that some, well, especially with S D M, when they managed it, they sent some of our lifeguard, well, their lifeguards at our pool, moved them to other towns, and then the manager had to shut down parts of the pool, but she kept it open. So that is like, they do sometimes.
And it may be something like that there, that we may not be able to have the detail, but still keep it shallow there. It'll be viable for another week or whatever. Like I said, it will all been on personnel that we have.
And one other real quick question, another thing that's going to ask a lot of me, are we going to have these kids, allow these kids to, uh?
We must, I haven't, I've, I've gotten asked that a couple of times myself, but I haven't found anybody to teach it. Lifeguards can't teach them that better than church. So that's what I'm, so.
I mean, I, I'm going to try to do that.
All the time.
Yeah, but things, things.
No, no, I know, but didn't think, okay. I just want to make sure.
Or not taught with.
Yeah, that one, the older kids for the.
Yeah, but we have swim team now, and, and so.
Yeah, this team will start on the twenty-seventh, so some of our lifeguards, that's kind of the extra challenge that we have. The pool will have to end a couple of weeks there, so.
Yeah, that's a challenge inside.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right.
Hey, Dr. Carter, we didn't have to move you guys to the south.
That's a good thing.
There are some more storms, but popping up out to the west will finish.
Oh, my.
Around nine o'clock. Um, the Blue Shield, um, that we, you guys approved for us, the revolution with the governor, uh, we got notification that, uh, um, our application was accepted. The city of Cameron's now Blue Shield community with the Missouri Department of Public Safety. And second thing, August fifth, I was going to, uh, let us have the new ballfield down at Old Somerville. Um, this is the first time that the police department is going to participate with National Night Out. That's where law enforcement puts together, uh, community get-together for the, uh, anybody in the community to come out. We're going to have live, live land helicopters, police fire A M F is going to be there. Uh, we talked to B O C, they're going, the Department of Corrections is going to come down. We're going to have, uh, the police department's going to give away hot dogs with water. We're going to have food trucks there. We're going to have a live auction, so it's going to be a good time. Five to eight on August.
That's all I, all that policy is.
Okay, great.
So it's kind of like, calling the police versus fire. No, I'm thinking that they're thinking they can look in.
The captain's soul against the fascination.
Uh, I don't want to get hurt.
That's what I'd be hoping for.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Oh, uh, working on the I T after plan. Uh, a lot of staff support stuff. Oh, okay.
Uh, two or three things. Uh, part of her, we've been pretty, pretty busy since her last campaign. We've run a lot of calls, uh, purely on the slave accident. Uh, it's going to get, going to get pretty serious here. It's five twenty-five, and I'm shutting down. Traffic on there is, I don't know. It's all worked good. Everyone works together and things like that. Uh, I've been working the, the plants and add a lot, especially the design, the motor corporation and their bike plan and flat, that type of things. And we've been working on that. We've worked with that very many, some other things, um, working. Um, thanks for the mention. I, I've been working on, uh, I've referred since, uh, while that frequency I D since two thousand thirteen, uh, that the road improvements and intersection improvements, they're, um, actually probably a general counseling, that we, we haven't had a seminar, so I don't have a overview of that, but it's going to look like. Uh, Mo dot, uh, is excited about kind of getting it out into the public, there's what's, what we're doing there, and what's coming, and this is a good place to be. So it's, it's getting close. Uh, we're getting down a wire with the financing. Uh, that's something that we've heard from, helping itself in front of the Lance about very important eyes just pass through the city. I certainly don't know, and, but I see it immediately. Over in that time, it's going, process is going through, and so we're headed when that time comes up. Other than that, it's a great, good finish to be, I mean, from all this, it's a big, well, it's laughing back in the bell. Um, unfortunately, no part of the building, uh, we follow it through, so, thank you for coming back.
No, I'm good. Carmen?
What's happening?
I'm going to go in there. Shelley.
Um, we did get the business licensing rules out, they're out late. We can be seeing people, but we didn't get that until May, but we are starting to come back in in blow, so.
You should have done. I thought, I kept waiting for, I, I, I can come in and get one, but I kept thinking, oh.
I would look at it.
Are you selling beer?
No, not at.
Hi, hi, you can.
Right.
This is a life thing a little bit.
And we did have a cemetery board meeting, and, um, you know, they, they approved the new contract, and we did talk about the motor for the mayor, kind of waiting for the option that passed on, uh, maybe recommended. I will be out of the office on Friday, you know, the day, Friday, but probably it's going to be available. Um, with the licenses, we're continuing to come in. It's just a day ago.
All right. Mark.
Okay, so I have five things here, and I'll address the council. And these are things I've thought about for weeks, and I, I spent the entire afternoon studying our manual, just to back up some of the things that I'd like to ask of the council. But please consider these things with an open mind, and.
So, please consider these things with an open mind, and, and, uh, think about what I'm saying, because it's for a very legitimate reason. First of all, with our city manager search, I think it would be a good idea to have an advisory committee, just like we do for City Hall. It's been suggested, has it been approved?
No, it was just suggested, yeah, we all agreed, we just kind of not moving.
Okay, and, so, I wasn't finished, but, I'd like to consider all the city staff, shall we, all to be on it, if they would like. I would also like to see that the staff would have the ability to ask questions, and be a part of the conversation, just the same as City Council. Because I feel like the staff actually works with the city manager more than we, and, and you have a lot more input as to what's going on in the city than what we do. So, I think that would be a really good thing to do. Um, the second one is, the consideration of a local person, Scott Connor, and I talked to the mayor about this, and I know that we have to go through SBR, um, to get him signed up as a possible city manager. I have his resumes, I've read him, I've talked to lots of people in town, and he's a real quality candidate, and he will be going through the application process. But the one thing is, the SBR is going to rank these people, and I think, I'm not sure how they're gonna rank somebody that, because they're local, is that better, or is that worse? I like to consider it being a better thing, because when I, I've spoken to him for two and a half hours, and he's conversant about everything, and Cameron's just the same as we all are. Okay, the third thing is about Parkport, and, um, I'd like Parkport to recommend a new president, they have five, they still have a forum, as I understand. I would like them to recommend a president, I would like them to, uh, if, if we can approve that president, go ahead and approve them, and let them get back to work. Um, I would encourage them to resume business, and communicate with city council. Um, I would like to see a Parkport, um, representative at every city council meeting. And the reason for this is, and I'm kind of the outsider looking in, because I was not on Parkport's side, I was not on council's side, I was talking to everybody, I spent hours and hours talking to Parkport people. But the reason is, is because the one common denominator of so much of the problem we've had is communication. And people saying, well, I, that, if I said that, and, and I didn't get heard, and I think that would be an important factor, just to say, you have a seat here, and, you know, if there's a question, you can, you can come to the council and report, and, you know, nobody wants to come to council, no, they're not gonna spend an hour of time, uh, talking, I don't believe. But, and the mayor can regulate that too, but I think it would be a nice gesture, and I think it would be a great gesture, as a way of healing in the community. So, we don't have so many ill feelings, and I think that, now, we need to go and rewrite every bit of the rules and regulations that have caused us to fall into this pit, where they think this, and we think that. And I think Patrick is perfect at doing that, and just item by item, you have an understanding that, yes, this is the rule, and that we, this is what we go by, and that we need to follow those. Constantly get input with them and communicate, and I know, I know we do, but at the same time, I don't think we have instilled that connection yet again, where they're functioning as a board, and like we should, that's not, I haven't felt that, uh, as a council member. So, that's my feeling on Parkport, I think we can reconcile things there, and get things back to functioning, but it's going to take everybody making an effort to work together on that process. And, uh, and, and sometimes people just have to let go, and say it isn't worth it, so, let's try to do that. Now, downtown, on January second, I'd like to see on the agenda, that we ask for a vote about extending this, uh.
June second.
June second, yeah, I'm not in favor, sorry. By June second, is not extending, you know, this, this proclamation to tear down these buildings, because we've had five years, this needs to be done. We need to not kick the can down the road, people in this town are disgusted with the way the downtown looks. And they want to see something done. Anybody that comes into town, the, one of the two things they're going to do, they're going to drive around, and they're gonna look at the school, and they're gonna say, wow, that's really nice, we got all this school, we got the golf course, they're gonna see the parks, and they're gonna say, that looks great, this is good. The, the next thing they wanna see is the downtown, because that's the core, the heart of, of the city, and boom, there you go, urban light. And, and we don't want that, and we're, we're just this close to getting that done, we've got the one building, these building that'll be torn down here. So, we need to get a commitment on getting these others torn down, and, and, and I know of two people that will both contribute equally to that, if, if it came to that, but I don't think, I was gonna say, I don't think there should be any public money, any tax money used to do that, if it can be avoided. Excuse me, it's just, I'm, I believe in personal responsibility, I don't think a person should willingly pass on the burden of their care to other people, and, and I think that's, uh, something we need to live by in the city.
It can't always happen, that you need to teach yourself, or, because this is, honestly, it's gonna turn around, and he's gonna want to rebuttal that, and.
Oh, absolutely, I, right, I even voted now, yeah, if I'm asking, she should be refused for this.
I don't, this is another call, I don't need to. You know, happen to hear this, and then turn around and rebuttal it in a council meeting, when we know who we're talking about.
So, I would say, most of the time, the council comments, what we tried to done, and what I believe they're, and what's for the, not so much for council communication, right, because it's not noticed on the agenda.
Right.
But it's just to, kind of make some general proclamation, like, not proclamation, obviously, but, general statements that, you know, maybe you want the public or staff to know about. So, I don't, if they're limited to no discussions, and we haven't discussed it up for.
Right.
This meeting, I don't think there'd be any refusal, but if we do end up with some sort of ongoing discussion about what the process should be asked for, that sort of thing.
But then she's gonna have, so you're saying she has the right as well to discuss.
But then if we don't end up, if, if we don't end up with a full council discussion on it, then there would be no refusal, I think, if you, if you guys wanna have council discussion on this, I'd say the next council meeting, just put it on it.
Well, let's just do that, I want, and I do that, yeah, let's do that.
But that's not fair, I mean. I, I, I want to give, but I don't think that's fair to have to.
She can hear it, I don't want her, she's gonna know what I'm saying.
No, no, I understand, but I don't want her to not be able to rebut, I don't wanna rebut.
There, that's what we don't need. We, we don't need that, because in the manual, it says, anybody that has a financial interest has to recuse themselves, and that's the terminology it uses. And there is a financial interest, and we don't need, uh, uh, you know, a, a, a different opinion, because this is what we need to bring forward, and this is what we need to vote on, and we need to get this done. And we have a commitment to the people of this town, that we are going to do our job, and not kick this can down the road any farther. And I know it's easy for me to say, and everybody's been kind and generous and understanding, but we're, we're so far beyond that, and now this is a time for action. And, and I think that we will do, do that, if, if the mayor would allow us to vote on that on the June second meeting, uh, as to what's going to happen with that, and then we'll go from there. Because that's not the answer, all we're saying is, this is the beginning of the answer, because from that going on, we have to figure out how we're gonna do it, and how we're gonna pay for it.
Well, let's not, let's not discuss it any further.
Yeah.
Yeah, and get it on there.
Let's get it on there.
Again.
Yes, and we got the water line on Main Street, that needs to be incorporated in that cost form, so, okay, so all, that's all I'm gonna say about downtown. And the last thing that I want is, is to consider this also, on the very next meeting, is to rescind that, that rule about rebranding. It's incredibly unpopular, it's, it's not what Cameron needs. Uh, the idea of a district is, it's premature to designate a district, because nobody in that district has been canvassed, we don't have a, a representation of the people that are actually going to be in that district, and I know, I've talked to many people who say, I didn't know anything about it, and I, I would like it just to be dropped, and then brought up again later, as needed, and, so I would like that to be on the agenda to vote on that, to rescind it on the next meeting, would that be possible, Mayor?
Uh, so, so the way that the, in fact, would be the resolution, that's the way that come in front of you anyway, the resolution to be amended by the council.
Okay.
To do that.
Okay.
That's alright.
So, um, is that agreeable?
Well, yeah, it would, it would already be like that, regardless.
Okay, so it will be on the agenda.
That was the.
It was not, uh, yeah, it's, it's, that the committee discussed about creating a district.
Yeah.
The resolution was just the top line.
Yeah, so the resolution was going to be for you to start the discussion, so that will be on the next meeting.
Okay, so then we can vote on it, to start that process. Okay, so, uh, so that's all I have, thank you very much, sorry it took so long, I got a lot said, appreciate it.
Um, I personally participated in citywide trash pickup last night, and it went really well, until Ed was rambling, that it was large trash pickup, and he kind of put me in a container. Sorry, um.
Well, I was there too, I cuddle every year, I didn't work it this year, I love to do that, I'll do it next year, um, but it was, it was good, it was really good, really glad to do that. Um, the only thing, um, the Memorial Day, um, at ten o'clock, at the, at the Veterans Memorial, uh, there will, there's always a little, uh, a small little, uh, remembrance of the memorial. And I will be reading a letter from my mother's. My mother's brother died in Prima, in Germany, and I didn't know it, I mean, he died as a, as a POW, uh, wounded in a hospital, that's all I ever knew. Well, I found a letter from a gentleman that was in Kerna, didn't know him, but was asked to be at his little military service in Kerna, and this, this serviceman spent a lot of time finding this young man's mom, and wrote a letter to her, and I was gonna read that letter, so, I think that's for sure. So, um, those new servicemen work really hard for each other and their families, and I just really, really appreciate that. And that's all, so, oh, I think, we're just going down the line today, I was so excited to say that.
We were talking over here about.
Sorry, guys, I get excited about veterans. You're right, I'm looking at what you exactly.
Oh, okay, well, um, just to have a couple of things, that I did have a question on, um, so I saw the, uh, water report, who can help me keep with, like, what is, I saw everything said, hey, we're good, we're good, we're good, here's the amount that we were at, what's the, like, how much barium can we have? I see we have a highest test result in the range of the sample, but I have no idea what.
Is there a, is there an EPL?
Uh-huh. Oh, thank you. I want, now I'll be able to go back and research a little more, I mean, everything was clean, but I just went straight for myself, when I don't know, I like to learn, so, um, the, just. Second thing, I know last time I wasn't here, that all being, um, better than the boys played really hard at districts, um, impressive group of kids. Um, anyway, I know that we got back, like, two hundred and four thousand dollars is unexpected, I think we need to make sure that money goes to, uh, debt service of some sort.
When you're talking about the money from Great Northwest.
Right, that needs to go to some sort of our debt service, and my.
Debt's with debt, but it's not with the largest.
Right, we get like ninety-three percent, or ninety-seven percent, what is it?
Ninety-two. But the checks made after Great Northwest.
So, how do we get the money?
You don't, because it's days.
Tell Great Northwest, they should pay ninety-two percent of our debt.
Um, I believe it's good to pay a lot of.
That is.
Yeah.
Okay, um, one real quick thing, did you get a call today from somebody to look at a road?
I got a message, but I wasn't in a address.
Okay.
I called the back, but.
I'll get it to you before, I'll get it before they. Okay, thank you, um, you find a chance to get a, get a, get a, get a, oh, that sinkhole.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, appreciate that, or he'll be all sorts of happy, I'm sure, until it's next to him that leaves. Um, and then, well, I'll skip, I'll skip that other stuff, for now, we can, that can be a feature. I just went through all of our debt services last week, and spent a bunch of hours looking for it, and, not really, we, and Carmen can correct me if I'm wrong, sixty-five to seventy million in total debt service, with, with water pipeline, the whole nine yards, you said?
That sounds off forty-five.
Well, that's what I thought too, until I started going through and having, you know, forty-five plus fifteen plus twenty, I mean.
Four, it's forty-five, it was pretty, it was pretty.
Great Northwest Hotel Water, and.
I know, we, we're just attracting all the people, we don't pay, we, we're the ones that are gonna have.
We sign contracts, hey.
Right, we, we are gonna have to pay, so, anyway, okay, um, but I'll get into that later, because it's, because that's a lot of money in debt that we have.
No, it's not our debt, it's the corporation's debt.
Okay, so let us not pay it anymore.
We, we sign a contract to get the water, that's how we, we're just, it's just to feed the water, it's not a liability, it's just water.
But we have a loan.
No, the corporation.
Corporations have loan, and we own ninety-two percent of that loan, right?
No, we're ninety percent of the water, not the loan.
So, the loan is just somebody else's, whose is it?
Great Northwest Hotel Water.
Which we are part of for ninety-two percent. Okay, that's all you need to do, we owe, we owe, or win, if, if this thing took off, we would get ninety-two percent of the profit, right?
No. We would just pay less of the ninety-two percent. We might go down to eighty.
So, we can move to a weekend, not lose as much.
On Waterway with the name.
This is, I'm done. Okay, I, Waterway.
Well, uh, five generations of my family are buried in the cemetery, so, sometimes I go out there and have dinner with family, but. And I know, and then I live over at, uh, Patrick, he writes on the cemetery, because I get relatives over there too, and I met with the cemetery's public, he's very nice. So, the guys are doing a little good job, too. And, yeah, that too, so, great, great cemetery, I'm very sorry about this, but, I don't know, we're all gonna step back and, and, a lot of people will be in the cemetery's memorial, I mean, it's, we're already, it's a. I know I will be, I have a place to go, so, anyway, the Cameron Band.
So, anyway, the Cameron Band is gonna play on Memorial Day, and he'll be at his suite, and, you know, like, cool, okay, and then, um, start, you know, yeah, they're safe. Eight o'clock, in the corporal park. That's all I have.
All right. I will entertain a motion, are we going into executive?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll put you up. To adjourn executive, executive session, uh, by roll call.
For attorney, client, communication personnel, and a vote, state contract.
Uh, thank you.
Bye, guys.